Hello and welcome to The District. This is a show that we actually launched over two years ago to highlight people, places, and things in specific districts across the city of Seattle. We put it up on the shelf for maybe a year and a half, two years, and so I'm happy to bring it back off the shelf and back onto your screens. Very excited here today. Our first interview with The District for 2024 is Seattle City Council member Joy Hollensworth, representing District Number Three. Joy, what's up? How are you?
I'm good. What's up, Omari? I'm happy to be here.
All right. You comfortable?
I'm good. We got nice seats. I'm comfortable. You offered me water. We're good.
All right. You look comfortable. Let's jump right into it. You know, first and foremost, this is my first time really talking to you in an interview since the campaign, everything. You know what I'm saying? We just kind of watch things roll out as to where they are. Clearly, you've been elected. You know, the people, they sent a signal. You're in office. I wanted to ask you this, though, first. Why? And you know, I know that there's the canned answer, but you're no longer on the campaign trail. You know what I'm saying? Why did you decide to run for this seat?
We're at a, this isn't the canned answer, but we're at a pivotal time in our city. And I thought my experience of working with kids, youth, would be paramount in to try to figure out who are we building a city for. Growing up in the city, I felt like a lot of times we had designed our Seattle to be, you know, infrastructure. We were talking about just city stuff, not building a home. And I think that's really important, remembering when Seattle was a home and wanted to incorporate that into a lot of the policy work.
Your predecessor, I will say, left some spaces of opportunity for a new council member to come in and explore those opportunities that might not, that your council members want, might not have been going down that path or addressing or things like that. What are some of these opportunities now in District Three that you see are wide open and glaring that you want to, I don't know, attack, approach, fix?
Biggest thing, constituent services, neighborhood services, responding to people, simple email, phone call, just being responsive. I think that's huge. From, we get emails from people talking about maybe a late trash pickup to sidewalk issue or drain is issue on their street. So it's being responsive. The second thing is incorporating the public safety piece. We know that stuff's going on all over the city. I'm sure we'll talk about it, some stuff today, but ensuring that we can kind of figure out a baseline level of public safety in our city. I think there's opportunity for that. There's opportunity to exploring black businesses into the Central District area, legacy homeowners, protecting them. There's opportunity for a lot of local issues in our city that I think have not been prioritized in the past.
Now, you're new on the job. You guys had about 20 days to kind of sort things out before you really hit the ground running. Won't go too deep into this process of the new council member, Tanya Wu, who's now joined you and the council is complete. So now, as we, you, we proceed now with a full council, because I know you guys put off some of the work until you had a full council. You got a full council now, man. What's up? What are some of the priorities for you and the priorities for your colleagues on the council?
Well, I want to first welcome Councilmember Wu to the council. I think it's phenomenal for us tonight now to have nine people for us to be able to now do committee work, to vote, you know, to be able to pass legislation. So what we're focusing on now for the first four weeks have been meetings. We've had briefings. We've had connecting with department heads. There's been a lot of behind the scenes stuff that people don't, you know, know what goes on in our city. So we've been getting briefed about those things that are coming down the legislation. The next piece is February is going to be really crucial for us because that's when all our committee meetings starts. So I'm the head of, I'm chairing Public, excuse me, Seattle Public Utilities, Technology, and also Parks. And I'm really excited about that because there's some really cool infrastructure stuff that we can do. And one of, some of the priorities that we've talked about as a council, public safety, housing, homelessness, affordability, small business, infrastructure, our office is really going to be focused on fundamentals. So focusing on the fundamentals for our city is going to be huge.
Now, you said that you chair SPU?
Yeah, correct.
Right. Now, is that, does city life fall under that?
It does not. They're on, they're on another.
Oh, okay. Because I was about to say, that's a whole nother issue over there when they talk about these dams and up there in St. Homage County and other places and, you know what I'm saying? Where Seattle's getting their electricity and all that. That's not your headache?
No, no, no. But I get to learn about water and wastewater and treatment plants and, you know, the Duwamish, all these cool things that come with water, drinkability and sewer. That stuff's really cool to me.
Yeah, no, I've heard you talk about that. By the way, let me tell you something you might not know. I actually have a degree in geology and a minor in environmental science. I mean, might be one of the few black geologists that you come across in a lifetime. Got a degree in geology from Elizabeth City State University.
Hey, that's dope. HBCU.
Yeah, so you know, I mean, I'm down, you know, take it offline, talk to you about hydrology and groundwater and you know what I'm saying?
I'm gonna be calling you for our committee meetings to give us briefings.
I'm in there. And another committee that you just mentioned was Parks. And sometimes Parks in Seattle finds itself in a love-hate relationship, you know, depending upon who you're talking to. I think generally speaking, everybody loves Parks in the city, but Parks Department at times has to make a lot of tough decisions because at times there's a lot going on in the parks.
They're on the front lines. Look, I, my dad worked for Parks 35-plus years. So he was always on the front lines of some of the social stuff that's going on in our parks. And they're really important to people, especially as we grow as a city, we become more dense. We have parks, our people's living rooms and backyards. Their Barnett Park's a place where people go for family reunions or they do Garfield reunion out there. Like Parks are their center of community. And so creating that accessibility for everyone, ensuring that they're clean, they're safe, that's been a priority for us. That will be a priority for us moving forward. I know the mayor's office has really centered that piece. And give a shout out to our public employees at Parks. They've been doing, putting in major work, being on the front lines of a lot of the stuff going on in our city.
Seriously, you know, you mentioned Barnett Park. And so Barnett Park, you know, last year, and I don't, I don't know where this is at right now. I need to follow it up because they wanted to make some changes to Barnett Park. I think they want to put like a pet, a dog park in Barnett Park. And man, if every big mama in them ain't come out the woodwork, talking about, you ain't fit to put no dog park in Barnett Park. That's what I'm saying. It's like Parks finds itself somehow in the middle of a lot of controversies.
I don't know who did that survey, but there's, look, there's Blue Lake Dog Plowright down the street. I think, you know, Barnett Park, there's not enough room for everything that people want. I think right now, just keeping that park as it is, is ideal.
Well, that's a legacy park. And there's quite a, there's quite a few people who I personally know who have been displaced from the Central District of Seattle that might even live in a different municipality now. A lot of them do. But they bring their kids to that park on the weekend. And I mean, those, those are the generational attractions that I think is important to our city. I was sitting in a meeting yesterday with some people from the Seattle Center. And believe me, I think that people like the Seattle Center would want that kind of attraction of people being like, man, I was there as a kid. Let me, let me drive from Federal Way, Auburn, or even Tacoma to come here and let my kids experience something. And some of these parks in the Central District and the, with displacement and gentrification is, is really a beautiful thing that people still feel that way. And I think that our city would benefit from a lot of these places. Everybody's struggling for, how do we get people downtown? How do we get people here? How do we get people there? If they're able to tap into that, that even though people have left this city, their experience meant so much to them that they bring their kids back to experience the same thing.
Of course, it's home. That's why we talk about building a home for Seattle. Powell Barnett Park was, you know, part of the black urbanism with Walter Hunley, the, the federal government had poured money into Seattle. And that was one of the things where community was like, hey, we need a space for us to have. Shout out to Walter Hunley and his family because he was really a true pioneer in our city to create these amazing spaces for Seattle. And same with the Seattle Center. Growing up there, I remember as a kid being able to go back to the Seattle Center, whether it was the Sonics, whether it was Folk Life Festival, Festival of Sundiata, all these cool things where people literally, if you go to some of those festivals, all of those people live outside of Seattle. They, affordability, gentrification, they come back to these places, it reminds them of home, them as little kids. I think Seattle can tap into more of building home, community, culture, and commerce all into one.
Speaking of home, you, you have an added layer or responsibility representing District Three and especially the Central District. Legacy neighborhood, not only for myself, but also you and your family. And when you talk about home and you talk about affordability and a place of belonging, we've all seen with our own eyes what's happened in the Central District. And emphasis behind this, this interview, this iconic interview wall was to be a reminder because we're always telling people like, man, this is what it was, this is what, but it was good to be able to turn on a camera and for people to see that. What do you think? I know that as one council member amongst council members, and that things do take time, but I'm not trying to make no excuses for you. We need some action. But what are your thoughts on housing and affordability in the Central District? And also versus, what do they call this here? Where you got a lot of people in one, one place? Because you got a lot, you got, you got houses that are torn down, there were single-family homes, now they've been replaced by six or eight families. Population density is what it is.
Yeah, look, when I was door knocking, I would meet so many families that would have three, four generations living in one home and they were in the Central District. And they would say, hey, I'm trying to hold on to my home, but it's hard right now. Or we want to get, you know, things fixed up, but it's hard right now. And they would have their grandkids, their great-grandkids living in these homes. And I know that there's this big push of talking about single-family homes, but black people want single-family homes too. We want neighborhoods, we want backyards, we want front porches as well. And so the first thing that we want to do is be able to keep people in their homes that have been passed down generationally, you know, these homes from their, their families. I think that's huge. The second piece is also figuring out first-time home buyers. You know, you'd be hard pressed to find a house cheaper than, what, $700, $800,000 in the city of Seattle, especially in the Central District, which is significant. So can we figure out ways in which we are matching the down payment assistance for folks? And that being a substantial amount to where they can be able to get a loan? And the third ability that we want to bring people back into the city is through business, black businesses. You know, the, the area has changed significantly, but we do see a window for people to be able to take an opportunity to be able to have a business in the neighborhood and serve a community and also be able to pass down whatever generational wealth they get from that business and expand and grow. And so those are like the three main pieces when we talk about housing and also creating the fourth one, because I'm thinking off the top of the cuss, the last one, is more entry-level homes. So maybe there are condos we're building more where people can buy their first home to create wealth. You know, just different types of ways where people can have that affordability and that entry level.
I ain't gonna lie, Joy. Is sometimes I walk through the Central District and I feel forgotten. And I am thankful for our community, they press the developers and the developers, like even something like, like you midtown, because, you know, you get a reminder. You know, my mama said a few years ago that she said that she's suffering from architectural trauma. That it's, it's, it's hard at times. And it's hard because things changed and then also is, we feel forgotten. And, you know, I don't, I know that like policy and legislation can't necessarily like fix some things that are in our community, but I guess I'm just expressing a sense of loss. And it's in a sense of loss that so many, you know, of us have that grew up in the Central District for generations and everything else. Now, you're, you're three generations in the Central District. I mean, what do you feel, I know you should try to be optimistic politician, I try to drag out, I try to be Debbie Downer, but you know, I mean, do things like that ever hit you at times?
All the time. Do you know how tough it is to walk down, you know, walk down a street and oh, that's where my best friend Andrea lived, that's where old big mama lived, that's where my grandmother's best friend lived, Ms. Dupree. You know, to be able to walk down that neighborhood and people don't even know you anymore. They don't even look you in the eye anymore. Then I'll say, hey, how you doing? Like that was one of, that is still one of the hardest things to be in the city and not know a lot of the neighbors that I grew up with. Now, on hindsight, when I was door knocking, every time I saw a black legacy homeowner sign, that's when I would go and talk to people and I'd spend 30, 45 minutes reminiscing. And they would talk about how proud they were to still have their home. And my cousin lived across the street and we still got that. And my mom, she lived over here. That was a sense of pride and it still is that they're holding on to their homes. I see this position as trying to figure out, how do we keep them in their homes? That is going to be huge, the population that we have left.
I mean, in government, I think some people might, might watch this and be like, well, man, that's, they need to keep themselves at home. It's this and that. You know, there might be a point there, but there's also the point, House Bill 1918, which was passed in July of 2019 unanimously by both houses in Olympia and signed by Governor Inslee. And it basically said that like the legacy African-American community in the Central District had been harmed by government, by, by policy, by lack of, by lack of resources, by, man, by all the, you know, trickery and strategery the city halls and, and state legislatures do. And, you know, it's, it's important that people realize this, like, man, these ain't just some black folk crying, that government actively worked against our community. And like I said, you know, you can't get the legislature to, to agree on much, but to pass both houses unanimously and signed by Governor Inslee tells you that there was a harm. And that, and maybe trying to correct that harm, the government should play a role in, in things that you're talking about, like homeowner assistance and trying to create a path forward.
Absolutely. I would hear stories from my grandmother talk about how she wanted to buy her first house on McGilver Boulevard, Washington Park. We know that those houses today are substantially like ridiculously more than what other, you know, property is around the city, but they weren't allowed to. And the developer told her, the real estate agent said, I can sell it to you, but you can't live in it. And that is what a lot of people had to experience when they were trying to figure out, you know, the, one of the greatest transfers of wealth in our country is through property, land, housing. That's huge. And so, you know, of course, the government should play a role into, you know, creating opportunities to keep people in their homes because the government worked against people not being able to have affordable housing and generational wealth redlining. We all, we, we know about that and now they have to, to play a part in, you know, repairing those harms.
You know, Stephanie Johnson-Tolliver, she's, she's gonna be the president of Black Heritage Society of Washington State. She's gonna be real disappointed because I can't remember the exact name of the gentleman on the wall, but it's a black guy lived on Capitol Hill, it was like 1919, it was over 100 years ago. His neighbors, they took him to court because they said he was driving down the property value because he's black. You know what I'm saying? He fought the case. He even actually ended up running for city council. He lost, but I'm, it's like, it's, yeah, it's nothing new. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
I think that, you know, at the height of things in 2020, right? And we'll talk about police and public safety here, right? In a second. But at the height of things in 2020, I would always have these conversations, especially with people who weren't, didn't necessarily live or come from black community, right? And I would tell them like, look, man, if peace broke out today between police departments and black communities, guess what? We still got these big three that ain't nobody addressing because it, it doesn't get people in the streets. And those, those big three are the income gap. You know, I had the latest numbers, but I remember seeing it's like, black households in Seattle make $42,500 a year. White households make over $100,000. I don't want white folks to make less, I just want to figure out how black folks could make more. That's one, that's one issue right there. The education gap. You know, it's a big gap that's happening right there with our kids in school. And the third, what we're talking about right here is homeownership, which is directly tied to generational wealth. I think a lot of times policymakers, people in city hall, even big businesses, because they like to jump on a slogan and think that they're, you know, hey, black lives matter and then the winds blow and then it's something else. But around the policing issue is something that all these people could run and run fast and everything else. But a lot of the, the bigger systemic issues that impact us, everybody ignores. You don't get 1,000, 10,000, 50,000 people in the streets talking about income inequality. You don't get them out there in the streets talking about the education gap or talking about the gap in homeownership. So for years, me and Treana on the Morning Update Show, we'd hear, we'd talk about, and that was always our question for people, is these big three, how, how do you see yourself playing a part in those big three, in the capacity that you can as a council member?
That's a great question. I would talk about the income equality gap a lot in Seattle because we talk about how we're the most progressive city, but yet the income equality for black household and family of four, $42,000. And for me, it's about economic mobility. And I think a lot of times we miss that conversation because when we're talking about policing, there are a ton of groups that are focusing on ways in which, you know, hey, an officer shouldn't be able to pull over someone with expired car tabs because we know they disproportionately impact people of color. I want to address why that person cannot afford those car tabs. That's the economic mobility piece. And I think we missed the conversation about that. And that's through workforce development, that is through homeownership, that is through black business, that is through, we build a $3 billion convention center. How many of those contractors were black? You know, it's thinking about all these developments and that we're having in our city and ensuring that we have the equity lens, ensure that the, we have economic mobility for our community extensively.
So it's a good question for you. You know, we had to warm up first.
That was just the warm up?
Yeah. I go to a lot of meetings around issues in our community. And one of the things that I don't hear is personal responsibility or, or, or community responsibility or parental responsibility. We hear a lot of things about, you know, what, what is occurring. And I, I think that there's a few, which is cool because there should be a few different chains of thoughts in a community or in a district, right? That there's, there's some change of thought that is, is 100% is the system. Then there's another chain of thought that is like, well, you know, people need to get involved. Meaning, let's just take it easy, they're all difficult, but let's take one, schools, right? That it's like, okay, well, man, the schools are failing, the schools are this and that or whatever. But y'all don't necessarily hear people being like, well, man, are, where are the parents? There's some parents who, first time going to school is when their kid got in trouble. They've never looked at the homework. They never talked to the teacher. They've never challenged their kids. You know what I'm saying? But when it goes down, then it's like the school is failing our kids. And so is it, is it that we're being failed by institutions? Is it that we're being failed by ourselves in our community? Is there a mix in between? Like what's happening as you see it?
I think there's a mix. My parents and my family never relied on the school to like teach me black history, right? Like that just, they didn't rely on that. And I don't think they ever pushed for, you all should be teaching black history. They taught me that, right? I think there has to be some type of responsibility and accountability both ways in which we have more involved parents in our school, but they also, we know that parents are working. Childcare is a lot of money. You can't expect parents to be, you know, super involved that can't afford it, right? That's, we know that the parent associations are more, you know, in affluent neighborhoods because those parents have more time to spend with, with their kids. But I think what we can start focusing on is hopefully a lot of the after-school programs and in-school mentorship programs that can help supplement some of the stuff that the school district and school board, even though the Seattle City Council does not have jurisdiction over that. But we do have a lot to do with the stuff around the school. So the infrastructure, the parks, the recreation, the programming, the libraries. A lot of people don't know, Douglas Shute Library has the largest collection, collection of African-American literature on the West Coast. Plug for my mom, she's an AKA. It's the AKAs that continue to upkeep that, that, the, the literature and the books there. But I, I really think we have to do a better job of investing in after-school programs and in-school mentorships to help supplement a lot of the stuff that's going on in our schools as well. Because I remember growing up, and I mean, you have a mom who is very knowledgeable about issues, about history. And I, and I believe a lot of stuff going on with our kids is because they don't know their greatness because they don't know their, their history. And my grandma always taught me, know your history, know your greatness. We used to hear that on KRIZ in the morning, Community Potpourri. That was their thing. And I think that needs to be focused on more.
Yeah. You know, I just, I, I do know this, right? Excuse me. There is a portion or a segment of parents in our community and probably most communities, that they're not in a position to parent right now. You know what I'm saying? It could, it might have been incarcerated, it could be fentanyl, could, you know, they, I mean, it's, it's real and it's out there, you know? And, and we need to collectively acknowledge that, that not all of our children in our community, you know, clearly it's, it's not equal when they're going home, if they're going home. Seattle Public Schools at any given time, there's a considerable number of students that are homeless, that are transitional. They're dealing, they're dealing with these issues. There's also a certain amount of parents, though, that can be involved, that I think that we, we need to challenge to be involved. And even if it's not just for your kid, it's for that neighbor's kid that, that you know. They might be doing time while, while, they might be unfortunately down here on First Avenue. And we know that our kids need our support. And just like how we used to say hello in our neighborhood and now people go and look down at their dog or they find a way, we, we have to go back to saying hello in a sense that we got to care for not only our kids, but for our neighbor's kids. We might be the only person to be able to reach out to them, to see the humanity in these young people. You know what I'm saying? To let them know that we care. And if we can, if we can get to our young people, young, to just let them know, you know, take a chance on yourself. Take a chance, there's a bigger and brighter future out there. You know, to let, let these young people know that we care about them and that we love them. You know, I don't have all the answers. I don't think maybe you do as far as, oh, if we just, there's one silver bullet. But I do know that, man, our babies need to be loved on. You know what I'm saying?
No, I, I, I agree. We grew up in an era where we didn't have social media, we didn't have the pressures of TikTok and Twitter and Facebook, what they're in, what they consume a lot. We didn't have video games like that. We had Mario and other stuff. Now they're playing, you know, Grand Theft Auto and, you know, and all these other games that I don't think a lot of people understand that when you're playing certain games or you're consuming stuff, not just what you're eating or putting in your body, what you're putting in your mind and what you're seeing on, on TV or, or video games can be somewhat harmful. And so our goal is to try to get from our, what we have in our office control over is trying to make more activities for kids, have job opportunities, get them off the video game and in front of the TV and get them out having a conversation with people, learning about, you know, skills, understanding that you can earn more as a Seattle City Light employee than you can doing whatever else you think you can do. You know, exposing them to new stuff that they didn't knew existed. And the first thing is exposure. I grew up as a kid, I had exposure, Omari, to a world that I never knew existed because I had opportunity from a family. Not everybody has that. And so if we can create opportunities for kids to have exposure to other things... And so if we can create opportunities for kids to have exposure to other things they never knew existed, that is our goal.
Our kids need it, and the exposure is big. I, I remember my mama, they, they organized, she was over Seattle Central, and they organized a bus trip of, of kids, young adults to Hurricane Ridge over, over in the peninsula. And it was so transformative because this was my first time ever leaving the Central District. You go and get on the ferry and drive over there and you get up on Hurricane Ridge and look out. And it was a transformational experience just to see new things. You know, it'd be, it'd be interesting and something I'm hopeful for throughout your time on City Council to figure out how, how we can love on these young people in, in our community, whatever that looks like. We're after school, like I said, S Y E P, even Seattle Promise, different programs that, that are out there. But, but showing up and letting them know that we find value in them because sometimes they're in a home or a position or a situation or homeless, and ain't nobody telling them that there's value. Ain't nobody telling them that they're great and they can be excellent, so. You find yourself in a unique position in District Three around public safety. And public, public safety in District Three definitely takes on different facets than some of your colleagues and say some of the other districts here. Although, all districts in Seattle are dealing with the issues of public safety in, in their own kind of way. But District Three is, is very unique. District Three was the home of, of the Seattle Protest, the Western Barricade, things like that. District Three is also the home of, you know, of, of some of our wealthiest neighbors and things like that in the city of Seattle. And you find that there's a mix of what people are saying. Some neighborhoods, they're saying like, in some parts of the Central District, they're like, look, man, we get overpoliced on small crimes and underpoliced on big crimes. And then you got some people who are like, yeah, well, we don't want the police anywhere. And then, of course, you got other people who are like, man, we need way more police. And so you have a lot of dynamics in your district. And you got a lot of people who have an actual impact. There's some people, I think that you weren't there, but when, when Tanya Wu first took questions, and even I asked Mayor Harold the question the other day, is that when it comes to public safety in the city of Seattle, a lot of times, policy is crafted by people who are scared of crime as opposed to the people who are impacted by crime. And so I know I've, I've thrown a lot of things out there, but public safety is a big thing. One of the things that you ran on, I wanted to wind it up and then I'll pitch it over to you.
Okay, thank you for winding it up. No, it, it's good. Look, it's one of the things I ran on, it's also one of the things that our colleagues, the other people that have been elected, ran on. I talked about how public safety means different things for different people. It also means different thing for different neighborhoods. And I ran on supporting the mayor's plan for fourteen hundred police officers in addition to, that could be detectives, that are people, you know, the behind-the-scenes folks as well that are helping get guns off the streets. It's also officers responding to stuff. I feel like we need to get into a place where public safety is a nonpartisan issue because right now it's this or that. If you have more housing, then we need to have less police. Or if we need to have, it can't be that. It has to be, we need this in addition to all these different things. And so when I talk about public safety, I talk about a baseline level of public safety that we have a fully-staffed police department, fully-staffed fire department, and also increasing our care team, which is our third leg of public safety in addition to our gun violence prevention programs, creating public safety by environmental design, whether that's lighting, ensuring that the cleanliness of our district is on point, making sure that stuff is cleaned up, that's a form of public safety as well. So it's not either this or that. For me, it's a nonpartisan issue. It's about functionality of our city, being able to respond to things that are happening in a timely manner, the right response to the right situation. And my hope and our goal is to ensure that people don't think that just because one person is asking for something, that it's gonna subtract and take away from something else. And I think that's where it's been very polarizing, it's very, you know, it's been this partisan thing, this or that, it has to be nuanced to the conversation.
So, last night, you, you held a meeting there on twenty-third and Union, and I passed by there. It was, I'm glad it was catered, by the way. Listen, you'll find me at all your public safety meetings, if you gonna have food from the jerk shack there, you'll, you'll, you'll find me there, I appreciated that. But maybe you can contrast between, like, say, the public safety meeting that, that you led there in Midtown and also some of the public safety meetings that you've been attending. I think it was the McKinney Center and, and everything. I know one thing for sure is that some of the meetings that I've seen, at least early on, some were hella black and some were hella white. You know what I'm saying? It's, that was just what I could see with my own eyes, just facts. But beyond that, though, I mean, are you hearing different things from different groups of people that all live in or work in your district? Really in this, this area in the Central District?
Yeah, it depends on where you go in the district and what people are responding to and what they want. There's also different people in neighborhoods that want certain things. It's also sometimes a generational thing, right? Like, there's different, there, there's so many voices. And so we're hearing stuff where we hear a demographic that say, hey, we would like more police presence. We would like officers to respond in a timely manner. We also hear from people that say, hey, we need more mental health providers. We need people that can respond, there's somebody in crisis, I don't want to call the police. I would like someone to be able to respond to the crisis that we see that's going on in our city. We've seen some folks that say, hey, we just want to create a safe passage from the school to the bus stop because there have been, unfortunately, maybe we don't need a police officer, but we want people of security just to be able to make sure students feel safe when they're walking home or going to the bus stop or, and wherever they're going next. You hear different things from different people, and I want to continue to elevate all those voices, not just pick the one thing that I think is the politically correct thing and just say, hey, that's the one I'm going with. Because right now, my job is to serve everybody in the district. This is a nonpartisan position. I ran on public safety, I talked about us supporting our police officers in terms of staffing. That's the one thing I was very open about from beginning to end, and I'll continue to be open about that. I will also not take my foot off the gas, ensuring that other safety needs are met in our city from people that want mental health providers, that want housing, that want, you know, food security, that have these other pieces that make them feel safe. So it's not either this or that, it's an and for me every time we have a public safety conversation.
Is upstream part of your, your public safety thought process? You know, there, there was, it was a pipeline in the sense of a lot of the stuff that we're experiencing right now. Didn't quite happen overnight, but when we talk about institutional losses in our community, like S B I and things like that, our loss of economic opportunities, so many things that now we got a pipeline. You got things like Africa Town where they're trying to get kids at six, seven years old and getting them excited in coding and this and that. They, they see it as a fifteen to twenty-year project, you know what I'm saying? But they're building a pipeline upstream to be like, man, we want these kids, we want to get them. Because the thing is, is, you know, our parents and Big Mama Niam, they'd be like, oh, you going to college? Get you a degree in criminal justice or go be a school teacher. You can't afford to live in the city off of that. So even if you do everything you're supposed to do and go, go to college, get this degree, you can't live here, let alone buy a home. So the thought process is build this pipeline of young people in a career path where they could come back to their city and they could be homeowners. You know, not Africa Town's program per se, but that was just as an example. How invested are you in your thought process and actions of looking upstream and knowing that some of these things are gonna take years to turn around in our community, but we have to start upstream?
I'm a product of seeds, you two, we're both are, seeds that were planted by our grandparents and our mothers, that they planted well before we even thought of. That is through different school activities, that was through different legislation that they planted because they wanted for the next generation to be able to have opportunities. And so it's our responsibility now to start planting those seeds. And it's come full circle where now we see the shift in creating job opportunities for kids that are in coding. Heck, I met a plumber that makes six figures, pipe fitter, electrician, a journeyman. These are jobs that are, are not well-known in our community because, you know, it's always, you may be a lawyer, doctor, teacher, criminal justice. It's like, no, you can go be a plumber, you can go be electrician, you can go be a certain trades, the trade school. You talked about it last night about S B I being that place, that walkability place where you were able to go get your barber shop license, where you were able to go get a certificate, where you were able to have, it was the front porch to a lot of these trades that we're talking about. And right now, there's a shortage in mechanics in our city, there's a shortage in electrician. There, those jobs where you're doing with your hands, I call them like old school, right? If you go to a school right now and you ask kids, how many of y'all know how to change a tire? You might get one or two hands, right? And so bringing that skill set back to our schools and understanding that, hey, you might not go, college might not be your thing, the trades might be your thing. And guess what? You can earn probably more money than you can in this career, but it's showing its exposure, which I think is, is really important. I'm, I'm really invested in that in our office, even though if we don't see movement in terms of, you know, after you plant the seeds, you know, this is a fifteen, twenty-year investment, and we're willing to, to make that.
All right, I see we're, we're up against time here. This is, so here's the best thing, though, right? Is it, you know, you ever hear the story about the frog? If you try to put the frog in the hot water, it just jumps right out? See, you, you just started, so this is like, we're introducing you to, to everybody. And through, through your time here on the council, we'll be turning up the heat.
I got you.
But, uh, just a few quick ones. What do you love most about your district, D Three? Also, I'll give you a bonus, the Central District, since you're multi-generational.
What, okay, I love everything about our city, but specifically about the Central District. I love the, the community, I love the uniqueness of it. I'd love to see the black businesses that have come back to be able to, you know, build on that twenty-third corridor that was the downtown to our city. I love seeing people that are still holding on to their homes and how it's a pride, it's a sense of pride for them. And I love all the unique neighborhoods in our district and the small businesses that you have in there. I love Capitol Hill, like, all these, I think District Three, you're, you're gonna talk to all the council people, we have the best district just because of all the small businesses and the people. And we got, we got the most culture.
Look at, riding hard for D Three, huh? Let me, uh, let me ask you another question here. I was there on January second, maybe, I was swearing in. How'd that feel?
It felt amazing because I had people that had known me since I was a baby, who grew up, who taught me. I had my pastor there, I had my, all my aunties and uncles that I, that, you know, I grew up with. And they were able to see the investment that they put in. It's also a big responsibility, but I also had a swearing in from a young lady who I'm mentoring, who's a basketball player, Leah, and wanting her to be able to see someone who looks like her, being able to be in a position like that, just like my aunt did for me when she was a Boeing executive, put me in her chair to show me and said, hey, can you see yourself in a chair like this? And what that did for me, to see a black woman in a position of influence and power at a big company, just sparked my interest of being able to climb that ladder.
Do you feel that this council, especially how everybody's like, yo, most people, you know, are all on the same page, all this kind of stuff? Do, do you fear that for the people who voted for, for you and like-minded council members, that you guys might have built a false expectation? That there's a silver bullet out there to a lot of these issues, these big issues that face our city? Man, maybe, I don't know, maybe you guys got some, something in the bag out there, you just go pull out, bam! And all the problems are fixed. But, you know, I mean, is that something that, that bothers you? That it was so many things, like, man, now we got the council that's gonna save the city, we got the council that's gonna do this and that? Like, are y'all really gonna do that?
There's always people that want you to move faster. I think the one thing that I really enjoy about this council is we really focus on the fundamentals. And that's huge. And, you know, what other elected officials say on that floor for their time and expectations might be different for everybody, but what I do know is that we're committed and willing to work together to focus on just essential government services and build off that, which I think is important. And starting with public safety in mind, which is a baseline level for a lot of things in our city going on, that's the commitment that I know. I don't know a timeline, I didn't overpromise during the election. I just talked about what we were facing in the city and, you know, wanting to have a different perspective on it and be able to work hard at it.
Man, what do you want your legacy to be here? You're, you're telling, you know, we know we got at least four years, you know, say, borrow something crazy, you know? Could be even longer, longer than that. I think that people who want to lead, then they also want to leave, and what they leave is a legacy. What do you want your legacy on the Seattle City Council? Because I'm gonna catch you in four years.
You are, I'm sure.
What do, what do you want your legacy to be?
You do a good job of holding people accountable, so I'm, I'm ready for you to, four years, for you to follow up. I don't think about legacy, I think about impact. And so what would I love for our impact to be for our, our office? And when I say our office, it's the people that work in our office, our district, the community, the people, the neighborhoods, the nonprofits. I would like us to have a legacy of being fundamentally focused on essential services, so focused on the fundamental, but having in mind young families and our youth and our kids, making that investment, which I think is really important. And we've really missed the mark on, on prioritizing that. I would love for us to be the council member, the council office, that had an impactful piece on our youth, our kids.
All right, before we let you go, is there anything else that you want us to know?
I just want to say I am very grateful for this opportunity to be the first interview that you have done in a year and a half, that you chose me, Central District residence. And even though we didn't grow up together, we still grew up in the same neighborhood and know the same people. Thank you.
See thee or see me. Seattle City Council Member Joy Hollinsworth, D Three in the building, thank you for joining.
Thank you for having me.